Music, Dance and Theater was first. That was our decision because there's so many artists working in those fields. We've moved on to round two, which is open now. We've added film, media, literature, and educational teaching artists. So if you were a pottery professor at a local shop and you taught groups of people pottery and now that's canceled, your series of classes is canceled. You can apply to this fund for some relief for those lost wages.
It's all online. It's all on the Department of Cultural Affairs website.
Very simple. You go to culturela.org. You'll see a little box that says Grants and Calls. Immediately you'll click through. You'll see a list of every program that's open. So if you're an artist and you've lost wages, you live in the city of Los Angeles and your canceled gig is in the city of Los Angeles, then you click on Artist Emergency Relief Fund and you fill out your one page. It's a JOT form. It's super simple. You just drop in your data and then the staff will call you if they have any questions or if there's something that doesn't match.
I wish you all the best and thank you so much for supporting all the artists.
My pleasure. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez was in the neighborhood this week giving back to communities of color that are disproportionately affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. This time she partnered with Northeast Valley Health Corporation to distribute care packages. Take a look.
It gives me tremendous pleasure to be here this morning, here at Northeast Valley Healthcare Corporation, to provide some very much needed supplies to members in our community that many of whom have tested positive or struggling with trying to help protect their families from COVID-19. We know that communities of color are disproportionately being affected by COVID-19 and so the need is still tremendous for us to make sure that the families have the resources that they need to prevent and contain the spread.
I think this is a fantastic idea to offer the community these care kits. Because of living situations and overcrowdedness in a lot of the homes in the Pacoima area, I think this will really help the residents, especially if they're experiencing having a family member that has tested positive.
Este evento es una oportunidad para seguir diciéndole a nuestra comunidad que estamos aquí para ayudarlos. Nosotros, Northeast Valley, está aquí ayudando y protegiéndolos contra esta pandemia. Recuerde que todavía tenemos muchos servicios. Se pueden comunicar con nosotros por medio de los teléfonos si tienen dudas.
There's a great deal of work that we need to continue to do and so I'm just focused on trying to help meet all of the needs as quickly as possible to help provide some relief for the families that desperately seek it.
It seems like there are countless ways to divide people into groups and categories. But as Maria Hall Brown reports, the challenge of the 2020 census during COVID-19 is making sure every person is counted.
It's incredibly important to be counted. Literally counted. And here to tell us all about Census 2020 is the director of the L.A. Census, Maria De La Luz Garcia. So nice to have you here.
Thank you for having me here, Maria. It's a pleasure.
Given that everyone's life has changed in such a short period of time, I imagine how you were going to conduct the census here in Los Angeles is obviously changed.
Absolutely. We had a plan to do door-to-door canvassing and encourage people to respond to the census and make our case in person. Since the pandemic hit, we obviously have had to change strategies and now we're relying on a remote phone bank operation where volunteers make phone calls from the comfort of their own home and convince people over the phone to respond to the census. But we're also relying a whole lot more on social media and trying to get the message out that people should respond to the census.
How do you feel COVID-19 is going to affect the census numbers?
I think we're all trying to grapple with the pandemic, right? On a very basic level. We're just trying to get by, make sure that we continue to have shelter over our heads, feed our families and, you know, continue operating as normal as we can. That's the challenge that we have, is trying to rise through the noise and kind of wave to people like, hey, this is still important despite, you know, what's going on in the world today.
Honestly, what does the census do?
Everything is related to the census. It really is the building blocks of democracy. The federal government uses census numbers to determine how funding is allocated to states, to counties, onto cities based on the actual count that they have for the people living in those areas. And this includes programs in education, like our National School Lunch Program. It includes for housing programs like Section 8. It includes Medicare. And so there's a whole array of programs that without an accurate census count, the city would not receive the funding that it needs to service or meet the demand of its residents.
There are some fears and misconceptions about the census that I am sure many people have, just not based in fact. And how do you conquer those fears and what are they?
Well, the way to conquer any fear is to get educated and knowledgeable about what the situation really is. They will never ask you for your citizenship or immigration status and they will never ask you for a social security number. So when you respond to the census, you're not really providing them with too much detailed information about your family's status. You're just simply telling them how many people live in your household and then what their age is and their relationship to you along with some other demographic characteristics. It's really easy to respond to the census. Whether you received an invitation in the mail or not, you can still respond to the census by going to my2020census.gov. You can also respond by phone at 844-330-2020. If you don't want a census taker to knock on your door, respond to the census before August 11th.
Goodwill of SoCal gives a jobs webinar. The SoCal Baptist Ministers Conference discussed the recent civil unrest and L.A. County Courts convene using technology. All this up next on City Beat.
The Baptist Ministers Conference held a march at L.A. City Hall, which included hundreds of clergy from the L.A. area to honor the life of George Floyd. The peace march began at the corner of First and San Pedro with participating organizations including National Action Network Los Angeles, Churches in Action, and local pastors and churches. Los Angeles County's court system is expanding proceedings to include technology options. A program called L.A. Court Connect will allow attorneys and self-represented litigants to appear remotely through audio or video appearances. The first available cases involving civil settlements and probate matters start during the week of June 22nd. The program will launch in phases during the summer for all limited civil, unlimited civil and complex, family law, and traffic courtrooms. Goodwill Southern California will host Out of the COVID-19 Crisis, a pathway to shared prosperity, a webinar event to discuss the state of the job market and projections. The program will feature L.A. County Supervisor Hilda L. Solis and California Labor Secretary Julie Su. Register to participate. Visit goodwillsocal.org.
I'm having Jamba Juice. They're having Jamba Juice for first responders. It's very kind.
Today, we partnered with Jamba Juice to provide a different assortment of healthy smoothies so that all the employees here at West Coast Hospital can come down, grab something quick because we know how busy they are. They're the ones that are protecting our communities. It's a small thing for us to just say thank you to them.
The work on the front lines is still very difficult. Patient needs are still very high and to know that the community is still recognizing that and supports us means everything to me but also, more importantly, to our frontline caregivers.
We work really hard. All of us are trying to work together to help our community and all the people that are suffering from COVID. But it's really nice to be acknowledged and it's very heartwarming.
We know that they're working 12-hour shifts and when they get to the hospital, they're not allowed to leave. So we try to do as much as we can to bring food to them.
Organizations and businesses across Los Angeles are sticking to the mission of helping their fellow Angelinos in any way that they can. Encino Little League gathers canned goods and Steamer Cleaners keeps first responders and job interviewees looking sharp. Check this out.
We, as the Encino Little League community, thought it'd be nice to help those that are less fortunate and have a canned food drive on a Sunday of Memorial Day since we can't all be at the parks and beaches and celebrating like we normally would. All the food's going to be going to the SOVA Food Bank at Van Nuys and then they will collect it, organize it, and then give it out to the public as needed.
The children are key to all of this. This is their Little League. This is where they get to play and we're not only trying to play baseball, but build a community and teach our children that it's important to give back and take care of their own community around them. And this food is going to go directly to the people who live locally and are in need.
It's important to be here to help people in need who aren't able to get food, but we're able to help and give them food and make a difference.
We're a community that helps each other out, especially during these hard times. Together we can get through this, but it takes a whole village to get through it. Can't do it on your own.
Thank you for taking time out of your day. This is such an important cause and your food will really, really, really help those in need.
We've been in business more than 30 years and we've had a few locations and this is our baby. We love Steamer Cleaners. We love the community. We love our customers and it's such a pleasure and a joy to have this place. All the businesses, as you know, in California have been affected and people are staying home right now so they're not going anywhere to do too much cleaning unless they're on a Zoom interview or a Zoom call. Then they wear their jackets with their shorts. So obviously, we don't have as much business now. However, we want to be part of the community, help in any way we can. Well, we wanted to do something to help everybody get on their feet and for the last few years, actually, we've offered anybody going for a job interview to clean their outfits free.
We figured what a great opportunity. We have all the resources to provide this for the community and my mom includes a letter about how to interview and we'll come on in, set you up for your interview so you feel confident. Even if it's during Corona, you can feel good on Zoom. And then we'd love to hear everyone follow up. Like, we love being part of the journey.
I know how important it is to be comfortable, be ready, feel excited and feel prepared for an interview. Anything that we can do at Steamer Cleaners to help with that is such a pleasure.
We're offering fluff and full delivery. We're offering regular pickup and delivery. We'll come out to your car. We're just trying to be accessible during Corona.
Our customers, our family, our offer is open whether you're a customer or not. We want to get your outfit ready, get you ready to go because your success gives us joy. We want everybody to prosper.
More than 30 million Americans have some kind of hearing loss and with the crisis of coronavirus, everyone needed to have concise information and updates. Well, fortunately for Los Angeles, there's a wonderful team of ASL interpreters and I'm delighted to have with us today Rick Pope, the coordinator for Los Angeles in the ASL team. So forgive me, I'm going to do it. Yay!
Hello, Maria.
I learned the alphabet one summer just because I thought it was fascinating. So I think this whole world is amazing and we've all gotten to know a little bit more about it because of the fact that you and your team have been part of all of these press conferences. When all of this began, did you have any idea that there was going to be such a need?
I had an idea. I have worked in emergency management prior to this. There's been press conferences and things of that nature in the field when we're dealing with fires. The pandemic itself was a unique emergency management messaging situation. Messaging was certainly the front lines of this fight, but you don't get really prepared for the sort of intensity when you realize that you're live in front of a better part of a million people. And also, you don't necessarily always know what the mayor is going to be saying because they can give you talking points prior, but while you're looking at these talking points, they're changing.
There had to be some unbelievable creativity because we were talking that there was no word coronavirus.
Right.
There was no... I mean, how do you express global pandemic? I mean, there were things that you had to create the language within the language in order to express the information.
Well, one of the things that we're taught is to interpret from meaning. So a pandemic would be interpreted something like a disease that has spread around the world.
Okay.
Coronavirus, we didn't have a sign, but the deaf community has always... The language has always adapted to the reality just like any other language and we came up, or the deaf community came up with coronavirus, which if you take a look at the molecular photographs that they have, that you have the nucleus of that virus and then those little spiked proteins surrounding it. So you figure out what that picture looks like and what it's going to look like in context and it spread pretty quickly.
The first time we met and we had a chance to speak because you were interpreting for an interview I was doing over at the EOC, you know, when you showed us the coronavirus, I spent like the next two weeks showing everybody, and this is Corona. And because it did, it was so visceral and it just gave me more interest. How fast your mind must work to be able to do this is stunning.
It's been certainly a challenge. I can speak for myself that it has certainly been a challenge. Rapidity and clarity, just in any other language, do not necessarily walk hand in hand.
What do you know firsthand? How does this help people who have hearing loss and rely on this? What is the benefit to them and why is it so critical? And why should we be sensitive to it?
When we're talking about the pandemic, it's life or death. When you talk about social distancing, social distancing is not a strong component in the deaf community. When we greet people, or I should... We hug them. And interpreters do the same thing. We hug them hello, we hug them goodbye. So social distancing is a real issue in the deaf community. Therefore, that information by all means has got to get out to the deaf community that just following cultural norms could endanger you.
The information that you're sharing is really inspiring.
The dedication to the people of Los Angeles has been undeniable, has been unmistakable.
Join a guided meditation on Zoom. Self-guide your own museum tour or blast off with the California Science Center. All this up next on Virtual Things to Do.
Since the California Science Center has shuttered its doors during stay-at-home orders, they've started posting daily livestreamed activities for your family to explore. Each week, the museum will focus on a different theme designed to bolster your child's science knowledge. If your dream is to be an astronaut, here's a fun way to get a head start. NASA has a section on its website full of virtual tours of the International Space Station, Hubble Space Telescope Mission Operations Center, and other iconic NASA facilities. Explore these pages and more on the new Stuck at Home Science tab. Visit california science center.org. Every Thursday at 12:30 p.m., the UCLA Mindful Awareness Podcast holds a free drop-in 30-minute guided meditation session at the Hammer Museum. You can download the app, stream, or download these podcasts. Each week has a different theme and usually includes introductory comments, guided meditation, silent practice time, and closing comments from notable guests. Currently, Zoom sessions are led by Diana Winston, Director of Mindfulness Education at MARC. For details, visit hammer.ucla.edu/programs/events. Heritage Square Museum will be open for self-guided walking tours. With a disposable printed guide in hand, view lovely historic buildings from the outside. Stroll through beautiful grounds and take a look at luscious gardens in progress. Check in with the museum cat, Belle, and say hello to their many chickens. There will be a maximum time allowance of one hour for guests to visit to make certain all guests are able to visit. All proceeds benefit the good work they do for historic preservation. Schedule your self-guided tour of the Heritage Square Museum, June 5th through July 31st. For details, visit their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Saieda Pagan. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 9th. I am Nury Martinez, the President of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the row. Bloomingfield. Councilmember Bloomingfield. Bonin. Councilmember Bonin. Buscayino.
Buscayino here.
Sidio. Councilmember Sidio. Councilmember Harris Dawson is absent. Councilmember Weezer is absent. Councilmember Corret.
Present.
Krikorian. Councilmember Krikorian. Councilmember Lee is absent. Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price. Councilmember Price. Rodriguez.
Here.
No, I don't think so.
Rue.
Here.
Wesson.
Wesson here.
Councilmember Bonin.
Bonin here.
Councilmember Sidio. Councilmember Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield present.
Councilmember Sidio.
Sidio present.
Ten members present in the quorum, Madam President.
First order of business.
Approval of minutes.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mr. O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Rodriguez moves, and Mr. Corret seconds, next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Wesson, can you please lead us in the flag salute, sir?
All rise. Place your right hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that would be the order. What's next?
Items 1 through 6 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 7 through 21 are items through which public hearings have not been held. Items 22 through 27 are closed-session items. Items 22 through 26 are closed-session items waived from Budget and Finance Committee. Ten votes are required.
Without objection, those items are not before us. Members, if you wish to call any of these items special, or you have an amending motion to any of these items, press your virtual hand. I have item number 18, Madam Clerk. This is a verbal motion to delete recommendation 1 and adopt recommendation 2 on item 18. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Sorry, I don't know if you can hear me. I'd like to call items 7 and 20 special for amendment.
Go ahead and read those into the record, sir.
Okay, on item 7, to amend item 7 on today's agenda to replace recommendation 3 with the following language, I move that the council present and adopt the June 3rd, 2020 city attorney-prepared ordinance in lieu of other ordinance attached to the file.
Is there a second?
I will second that for Mr. Bloomingfield. What's the next item, sir?
So, item 20, it's a substitute motion submitted yesterday with a technical amendment to change the fund numbers for Streets L.A., Office of Finance, and Wreckin' Parks. I move that we adopt the substitute motion.
Is there a second? Ms. Rodriguez? Members, are there any other specials or amending motions? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The applicant, or excuse me, the appellant for item number 1 has requested an extension on the appeal, so without objection, the council might want to continue the item to June 30th.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. This item will be continued to June 30th. Members, are there any other specials or amending motions? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to public comment. Madam Clerk, go ahead and read the caller information for those that wish to speak today.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press the pound sign. Then press pound again when prompted for a participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak. Let me repeat, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press the pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak.
Madam President--
Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney. Go ahead and explain our speaking rules to the public.
Thank you, Madam President. To members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or get stray off-topic, the president will cut you off, and you will forfeit the remainder of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We will take 35 minutes total of public comment. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, you are live in the council meeting. If you are also listening to the council meeting on your computer, Channel 35, or other device, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately. There's a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast on those devices, and it will cause confusion if you continue to listen on your other devices. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, let's go ahead and take the first speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Tom. I'd like to give general public comment.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
So, I'm calling about the budget. The budget is indeed a reflection of our values, and LA's values are not 51% or 54% of unrestricted revenues going to the police. We are a city struggling with homelessness, unemployment, climate change, access to sustainable transportation, and housing affordability. We should be spending the vast majority of our unrestricted funds on those issues. We should not be paying to send armed police to domestic disputes or to check on our unhoused neighbors. We need to start from scratch and from the ground up. It's difficult to imagine, if we started from scratch, that we choose to spend billions on police while letting the rest of the city's initiatives fall, especially during a pandemic and looming depression. Yesterday in the Budget Committee, I was glad to hear from Councilmember Bloomingfield that he is considering the diverse voices that make up this city. But this was a surprise, after hearing many of his colleagues, including Krikorian and my council member Gil Sidio, belittle the residents getting involved earlier this year by mocking the means by which they do it. I am, however, not glad to hear the council--
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sidio.
Yes, since I, my name was invoked, I want to note that I have incredible pride and support for the protests that have been taking place. I have a 50-year history this summer of engaging in that activity, and I also want to note that we should put all the facts on the table. In fact, madam, is that there is about 17.5% of the budget, the city's overall budget, is directed towards policing. Just the facts. Thank you.
Let's take the next caller.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, this is Sasha Kirshner. I would like to speak on general comment.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Thank you, council members. As a young member of the Los Angeles community that sees our youth almost irreversibly disillusioned in the justice of our system, I implore this council to address the core of policymaking and redistribute a minimum of 30% of the total LAPD budget to invest in our Workforce Development Commission, in rebuilding small businesses, in our Ethics Commission, and in alternative rehabilitation methods outside of the police. We cannot let our communities suffer in poverty and unemployment during an unprecedented global healthcare pandemic while allowing hundreds of thousands of citizens be furloughed, while the LAPD are treated to raises and overtime, fiscal paths in the back for contributing to the oppression of the very citizens that fund them. I also implore these council members to directly acknowledge the blunt force and civilian torture that was executed last Monday. Hundreds of people were put onto buses and zip-tied, cut, and left without medical attention, and left on their own, an hour away from the city to fend for themselves.
Thank you.
I thank you for your time.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Kevin. I'm with the Sunrise Movement, and I'd like to speak to item number 19 and general comment.
You have one minute for each, your item 19, and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, item 19 is a resolution. This is the bare minimum. You know, this is the type of stuff that people really are frustrated seeing from the government. You know, things that don't actually go far enough. I'm calling to add my voice to the chorus, just demanding that you defund the police and adopt the People's Budget. On May 30th, Europe cops brought violence to a peaceful protest in Fairfax, shot chemical weapons and rubber bullets at my fellow protesters. On the next day, they ran over protesters with an SUV downtown. The day after that, they shot rubber bullets at teenagers in Hollywood, and everybody in the country watched these videos go viral online. And, you know, this unhinged multi-day terrorist spree in response to protests against police violence is absurd. If that wasn't enough, Mayor Garcetti called in the fucking military where they stood outside precious downtown small businesses like Starbucks and Whole Foods. By the way, which hotel were they put up in on such short notice? Why wasn't Project Runway given the same urgency for our unhoused neighbors? You and Mayor Garcetti have let us know over and over again exactly which side you're on, and on Sunday, 20,000 of us showed up to the streets of Hollywood and told you which side we're on. Did you guys see that? We demand loudly and unequivocally defund the police. Reallocate those funds to support people of color who've been terrorized by the LAPD for decades. How do you look at the city that you govern and not fucking hate yourselves? We have 60,000 people unhoused. We have rampant environmental racism. We have 80% of LAUSD students that live in poverty. You're defunding the Climate Emergency Department, and you look at all that, and you're still like, yeah, let's give 54% of the money to fucking cops who make all these problems worse? Shame on you! The People's Budget trended nationwide on Twitter yesterday. The whole country is watching your pathetic asses. Pass the People's Budget. Fire Moore. Fire Jackalacy. Garcetti should resign. Ayid Matan, and of course, fuck you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I actually have a question. If I want to speak on one of the closed-session items, can I do that, or does that have to be in general public comment?
No, you can, you can, thank you for asking the question. You can go ahead and speak on any item that's agendized today. What item would you like to speak on?
Actually, I'll do the general public comment.
So, you don't want to speak on any of the closed items, because you can do that?
No, actually, I'm asking the question for tomorrow. I want to speak on a closed item tomorrow, so I'll come back. But I'd like to do public, general public comment today.
Okay, you can, you have one minute? Go ahead.
Good morning, council members. The city of Los Angeles has a very important ordinance that protects four species of trees. It's called the Protected Tree Ordinance. You will have before you tomorrow a decision about whether to settle a case that was resolved by the courts against the city on that ordinance, and if you settle with the developer, you'll effectively eviscerate the Protected Tree Ordinance. So, please consider in advance of tomorrow's closed-session hearing how you will instruct the city attorney, but we believe that the Protected Tree Ordinance will be saved, essentially, from being irrelevant if you decline to settle, and then you go back and hold hearings again on the case, because the case involves a penalty to a developer for removing protected trees without an ordinance. It's the first time a heavy penalty has ever been used, but any penalty less than--
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi there, my name is Mavia Girl, and I'd like to make a general public comment.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mavia Girl. I'm an elected city official, serving as a board member and the treasurer-elect for the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council, and I wanted to let you know that, first of all, it's a violation of the Brown Act to limit the number of participants. I know that in yesterday's meeting, so many people were trying to comment and couldn't even get through to the call, and it's a violation of the Brown Act. More importantly, Angelenos are demanding that you revise the mayor's proposed budget and drastically reduce funding for the LAPD. This means enacting the People's Budget LA, cutting funding for LAPD, and reallocating those funds to social services and programs to restore justice. City Council and the mayor have the power to do this before July 1st. As a point of information, I'd like to point out that every councilperson on the Budget and Finance Committee, and most city councilmembers, have received campaign donations from the Los Angeles Police Protective League PAC. Furthermore, LAPD needs to be held accountable for the war crimes committed against Angelenos at Black Lives Matter protests, including the indiscriminate use of tear gas and rubber bullets. I saw this with my own eyes--
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Oh, hey, Nury. This is Sabrina Johnson. I would like to speak on item number 17, 27, and general public comment.
You have two minutes for your two items, and your one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
All right, so relative to item number 17, the rent escrow account program-- For the listeners who don't necessarily know what that is, that is a city program that is designed, or was designed, to protect renters from slumlords, basically. If a property has extreme habitability issues, mold, you know, rats, car roaches, stuff like that, it can be taken over by the city temporarily, and the rent dollars can be diverted into this escrow account that then is used to make the necessary repairs to the structure. And from my experience as a housing activist, a property has to be really, really bad to be taken into this program, like, really, really bad. We're talking about landlords, owners, who are neglectful, you know, willfully neglectful, and are just some of the most egregious slumlords in the city of Los Angeles to get these properties taken into re. And item number 17 today, the council is considering removing a number of properties from the rent escrow account program because the necessary repairs have been made, which is what it is, but refuses to pass or even discuss in council basic renter protections. So, the council is effectively prioritizing handing control of rental properties back into the hands of the most egregious slumlords in the city so that they can make money, meanwhile not passing renter protections to protect people who have lost their income due to COVID-19 and may be facing eviction at the end of the emergency period. To me, this is unacceptable, and I hope to the folks who are listening that you have a little bit better understanding of what the council's priorities are. And I figured I'd just call in and make this comment since, as Mitch O'Farrell so graciously pointed out, I'm currently unemployed and have all the time in the world to foment chaos. Meanwhile, and this is relevant to item number 27, the city is being sued over the rights of our citizens experiencing homelessness, which by some estimates, there will be as many as 120,000 more falling into homelessness after the pandemic because of the council's failure to act on renter protections. So, yeah, I hope that, I hope that for the folks listening, you get a little bit better idea of where the council's priorities are in this moment. And then, as far as my general public comment--
That was your general public comment, Sabrina.
I would just like to point out that, you know, we had--
Thank you. Your time is up. There was two minutes, and additional minute for your general public comment.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Rob Quan. I'd like to speak on item 19 and general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for item 19, and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
As to the state of the emergency, at this point, I have to ask, like, what state of emergency? I don't know if you saw what was happening in Hollywood. There were no cops the other day, and entirely peaceful. I, again, I mean, we just went through one of these, and we're still under a state of emergency due to COVID. In both of them, we've put your blind trust in the mayor, and I, you know, he passed an order declaring people have to wear masks outside if they're going to be around people, and 90% of protesters out there have masks on, and 90% of the cops don't. The other day, we had-- out there have masks on, and 90% of the cops don't. The other day, we had Joe Buscagino and John Lee chumming it up with Police Protective League. And hundreds of them, all were posing together for pictures. Not a single fucking one of them had a mask on. Continuing, I think it's really absurd that every meeting, we have our council president scaling back five minutes, five minutes from the time allotted for public comment. We're currently just teetering above the bare minimum allowed under the current city council rules. And that's ignoring the fact that the vast majority of council and committee meetings have been canceled.
You can go ahead and move on to your general public comment now.
Worrying about a $1 billion deficit. And I have to ask our aspiring city controller, how the fuck do you think we could ever cover half of that without cutting LAPD costs? We had a news story breaking the other day with Jamie McBride from the Police Protective League Union openly leaking information about Nerri Martinez's security detail, information that LAPD HQ says is private. So I have to ask, is there going to be an investigation of that? Are any of the other councilmembers chumming it up with the police, like Joe, like John, going to call that out? Reminder, you spend 3.15 billion policing us, but you only spend 3.6 million on policing yourselves with our ethics commission. And I also want to note that one of our elected officials is currently in ongoing violation of our local campaign finance ordinance. More on that later. Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, this is Richie Sержenko from Sunrise Movement LA and People's City Council. I'd like to speak on item nineteen and public comment, please. Can I go?
Yes, please go ahead with item nineteen.
Thank you, Stravinsky. So, yeah, item nineteen, like caller mentioned earlier, it is just a resolution. I mean, I don't know what exactly you all think is going on, but what we've seen over the past few weeks from LAPD, it's made national news. There's a lot of eyes on us right now. And the eyes are seeing that LAPD is brutalizing Angelinos. And you all, as elected officials, have to do a deep look into what is really going on in your life. Because Angelinos are being beaten, sprayed with pepper spray, being shot by rubber bullets by LAPD. They're not here to protect and serve. They're here to brutalize. And they brutalize and terrorize black and brown communities in Los Angeles. And the only reason for their existence is to be violent. And for all of you members that are afraid of LAPD, listen to what the people are saying. You can defund them. You don't have to be afraid of them.
Please go on with your general public comment, Speaker.
Oh, public comment, got you. Nerri Martinez, thank you for limiting public comments to 35 minutes today. I know you really don't like being criticized, even though it's your job and you are beholden to the public. Gil Sadio, isn't that a violation of the Brown Act to hop in and respond to a public comment during the middle of a public comment period? Gil, we've been saying 54% of the general funds the entire time. And Paul Kikorian, I know that you reported my tweets. I put your address out on Twitter last night. That's funny. But we're going to keep posting, Paul. We know where you live. John Lee and Joe Bustiano, we see the pictures that you're posting with the police on Facebook. None of you are wearing masks. And none of you people can hide. None of you councilmembers can hide. And all I have to say is I yield my time. Fuck you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, is this me?
Yes, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Randolph. I'd like to speak on item nineteen and general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for each. Go ahead.
As far as item number nineteen, let me be clear that the acts of violence are being committed against the public peaceful protesting, and as well as medics that are on the field of protesting right now. Secondly, yesterday in the budget meeting, one of you were talking about trees dying, sidewalks being cracked, and making sure that our budget does not go to those things anymore. I live in Los Feliz. About a year ago, or two years ago, we had perfectly fine streets repaved suddenly. This is a misallocation of our local city budget. To have our budget go to repaving streets and fixing sidewalks instead of saving black lives is just absurd. So, please, use your city budget not to keep trees alive and to make sure sidewalks don't get cracked, but to make sure that your police isn't brutalizing peaceful protesters. You need to be defunding, demilitarizing the police. There is no reason for them to be in full military garb without masks, as previous speakers have said. Also, you're cutting the time that people are allowed to speak.
So please go on to your general public comment, Speaker.
One minute for public comment. Now it's one minute for each item. Do your job. Listen to your constituents. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, hello. Is it my turn now?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. What items do you want to speak on?
I'd like to speak on item number nineteen and a general comment.
Okay, you have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Thanks. Since you didn't make me introduce myself, my name's Jesse. I'm here in Hollywood. I believe that's District 13. Mitch the Bitch? Right. So let's be just really clear here for a second. The police, if you flashback to California in the 60s and the 70s, you had to kind of shake hands with the KKK in order to handle any kind of police officer. And when we look at police departments in general, following World War II, New York, Chicago, and LA had huge problems with gangs. So they took a lot of, mostly ex-Marines, but essentially what we think of today as special forces types, right? And made them cops. They paired them up. They sent them into the worst neighborhoods, and they let them straight up commit acts of violence against civilians in order to get the gang problem under control. 20 years ago, you guys did very similar stuff. You literally took all of the people on Hollywood Boulevard, particularly near Highland and Hollywood, puffed them on the bus, and shipped them over to Venice. That's why Venice has this entrenched homeless problem.
Please go on to your general public comment, Speaker.
Great, great, great. Perfect. So the problem here is, for my general public comment, is that you guys are allowing the police to commit acts of domestic terrorism and to finance. I want you to consider what we do to the people that finance Al Qaeda. Fuck you. I release the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Penn. I'm a volunteer and organizer for Democratic Socialists of America, Los Angeles. Good morning, City Council. I'm a constituent in Koreatown, and I am very tired of making these calls. I would like to speak on Agenda Number Nineteen and give a general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for each. Go ahead.
So, on Agenda Number Nineteen, this is an absolute joke. There is no state of emergency. I've been out there. I've seen with my own eyes. I was personally shot at without any order to disperse by LAPD. I was given no warning. There is no disorder until LAPD uses unnecessary force. I will say firsthand, I know the LAPD are the ones inciting these riots through use of violence against peaceful protests. Our own volunteers have been targeted. Those were volunteers providing water and medical aid. There is no state of emergency. This is a peaceful movement. And these people, excuse me, these peaceful protesters have a very clear demand. Now I'd like to move on to my public comment.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
The Budget and Finance Committee should call an emergency meeting to discuss the budget and vote on measures immediately. We've been very clear that the budget the community wants is the People's Budget LA. That is what we've been calling about. It's been reported by the LA Times, over 3,000 people have been arrested. The curfews are finally, you know, they've been lifted. We're done wasting the taxpayers' money with the National Guard. But as I said, I myself watched a police enter a protest riding on the side of an SUV and begin shooting indiscriminately at protesters without any notice of illegal assembly. These protests will continue, and we will continue calling again and again. None of you seem to understand the amount of organizing against you that is happening right now. And if you care, if you actually care to listen to your constituents and keep your seats, you will listen. The people are in solidarity. We've given you a direct--
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. What items do you want to speak on?
My name is Cheryl, and I'd like to speak on item number nineteen and general comment.
You have one minute for each item. Go ahead.
Okay, so item number nineteen, LAPD causes the unrest and violence in this quote-unquote "state of emergency." So let's talk about why item number nineteen exists at all right now. Blumenfield, I can't help but notice that yesterday in the budget meeting, you said that the police funding makes up 10% of the total city budget. But today, you're saying it makes up 17% of the total budget. So you're either manipulating numbers when it's convenient for you, or you need to take a basic math lesson. And President Martinez, in 2013, the LA Police Protective League endorsed you and said this of you, "We know that she will work to give officers the resources they need and put more officers on the street." Congratulations, you've done just that. We're not stupid, President Martinez. We see why you're protecting the police. You've given the police pensions and security and raises while Angelinos struggle to find housing, mental health resources, and a proper education. You've empowered them to shoot us with rubber bullets as we peacefully protest in the streets by doing the police union's bidding in a pathetic attempt to preserve our power.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Amanda Leon Mazur. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead and tell me what items you want to speak on.
Hello, my name is Amanda Leon Mazur. I am here to speak on item nineteen and general comment. I am a resident of Chinatown, Council District 1, represented by Gil Sadio. On Tuesday, June 2nd, I was violently pushed down to the ground outside of City Hall, which is less than 10 blocks away from my home. I suffered a traumatic injury from the violent action. I have a bruised tailbone and impending x-ray surgery for fractured coccyx. I ask that we cease this taxpayer-funded violence against women and against the citizens of Los Angeles in general, and reallocate funds from the police department into mental health and housing programs for both the homeless and working families, as well as building additional recreation centers and parks throughout the city. COVID-19 has shown us how important these public spaces are, and the past two weeks have shown us where we can find the funds for these programs, and that is by defunding the police and reinvesting these funds into programs that better the daily lives of the citizenry of Los Angeles. I remind the councilpersons on this council that your duty to the citizenry does not end on the day of your election. Do the right thing for the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Do you want to give your general public comment, Speaker?
That's it. That was it.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Delgado, and I wanted to give a public comment.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Saludos a todos mis compañeros contra la policía. I'm a lifelong resident of District 11. Shout out Mike Bonin. We need you to be a stronger champion for the People's Budget. I'm calling for City Council to redirect 50% of the city budget that goes to LAPD to fund all the other shit that is clearly being purposely underfunded, including LAUSD, where 80% of K-12 students are Latino and Black students. At this point, you are blatantly racist if you would rather fund the LAPD at the tune of $3 billion instead of Black and Latino schoolchildren. Also, why the fuck is the police budget so much bigger than the LA Fire Department when the LA Fire Department actually protects us from harm and helping combat the excessive wildfires due to climate change? I wanted to give a shout out to the International Longshore and Warehouse Union, ILW, who stopped work for nine minutes across the West Coast in honor of George Floyd. Rest in power. Long live the working class. Death to all racist capitalist pigs. Fuck you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. What items do you want to speak on?
Hello, my name is Seifim Morales, and I'd like to give a public general comment.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Hello, I want to speak to the council just about how ridiculous it is where the budget for Los Angeles is going. If you take a look at the graph of where the money has been distributed, 150 that Garcetti decided to take away from the $3 billion that they gave to the police department, you take a look at the graph, and there's surely no fucking change going on. It's really ridiculous that you people are allowing the police out there to be killing innocent civilians protesting for equal rights. It's just so ridiculous. You guys are human. All you guys care about is money, and you don't take care of the people. So fuck you and go to fucking hell. I yield my time.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Genesis Disqua. I'd like to give public comment. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. What item? Do you just want to speak on general public comment?
Yes, that's what I said.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute.
Great. So I'm calling in support of Black Lives Matter and People's Budget LA. I think that you guys, as the city council, already should know that you work for the people. You do not work for LAPPL. You don't work for the fucking police department. You guys are completely embarrassing. You don't hold the police commission responsible, and you think that the citizens of this city are stupid. You think we're dumb. You think we don't see what you're doing with the budget. But people are becoming empowered. And I want to remind you that we vote you in. We will vote you out. I promise. Maybe it hasn't happened before, but this is a movement that the black community is really, really putting together. And everyone is behind them. Also, John Lee, I'm your constituent in District 12. I called your office recently, and your legislative person answered, "He was an asshole. Get it together in your fucking office." I yield my time. Fuck you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Ben. I want to speak on general comment. I want to reiterate everything that has been said so far regarding the budget and the police department of Los Angeles. Every interaction I've ever had with LAPD has been negative, destructive, and borderline criminal. That department is a disgrace to the city, is a cancer upon the city, and needs to be defunded and removed. It is a failure of Los Angeles, and a failure of public government, the problems we have in this city that are being solved by violent thugs. Thank you. I yield my time. Fuck you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Adam Pilarzki. I'd like to just give a general public comment.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Yes, thank you. I am represented by Councilmember Weston. He's done a very good job at hearing the demands of some of the protesters. I'd like to echo everybody else who has come before me, and I say that right now, the city's eyes are on you. We have seen very strong demands from the people of this city that we need a People's Budget LA. I think it's important to remember that in the midst of all of this, we are still in a pandemic, and the priorities are still only lying with the police, who, especially now more than ever, have proven to be a public threat more than a public security measure, if you will. And right now, the only solution is for you to yield to those demands, adopt the People's Budget of LA, and defund the criminal mob organization known as the LAPD. I yield my time. Fuck you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Lisa. I'd like to leave a general comment.
Yes, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm a constituent of David Ryu, a councilman who's received $45,000 in donations from the Police Protective League PAC. I'm calling to insist that the city council reject the mayor's budget, adopt the People's Budget, and reallocate the vast majority of the $3 billion police budget to actual city services that help people. Like most of the people who've called in the last two days, I could share facts that support this argument. I could tell you that when not killing civilians, the LAPD does the noble work of criminalizing poverty, scaring students, and not solving rapes. I could tell you that throwing piles of money to send cops to parks and unhoused encampments is far less efficient than spending that money on public bathrooms and shelters and mental health resources and public transportation-- and mental health resources and public transportation. I could tell you all of this and more, but that would allow you to pretend that you and the City Council have not known these facts for decades. You don't need facts, you need a conscience. So reject the budget, grow a spine, do your job, defund and divest from the LAPD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Ariadne, and I would like to speak on general public comment as well as item 6 and item 7.
You have two minutes for your two items, and your one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
And Speaker, please start with the items, if you would.
Okay. So regarding items 6 and 7, the council should not be considering adopting any EIRs or mitigated negative declarations at this time, especially in City 14. There is a massive cloud of suspicion over every development project that has happened in downtown in the last seven years, thanks to Jose Huizar, his corrupt aides, the various bribery schemes that the LA City Council and various deputies are involved in. John Lee, shout out to you for also being corrupt as hell. So yeah, I guess that is the limit of my comments on those. The council should not be approving any EIRs at this time for any development project, unless they're public housing. So moving on to general public comment. The people of this city have demonstrated physically, literally, metaphorically, loud and clear to you that you must adopt the people's budget and you must defund the Police Department. The LAPD should be disbunded, defunded, and dismantled entirely. They cannot be trusted with these weapons of war that they've been deploying on our residents, on myself, on others. It is absolutely absurd to think that $150 million reduction in their budget is anywhere near sufficient. We do not need a cop out. We need the cops out. I yield the remainder of my time. Go fuck yourselves.
Thank you, sir. Okay, members, that concludes our public comment for today's agenda. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on some items. Do you want to read those into the record, please? Or what items we're going to vote on?
Yes, Madam President. Those would be items 2 through 5, 8 through 17, 19, and 21.
Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino. Councilmember Buscayino. Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian. Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Krikorian said aye, okay. Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Weston.
Weston, aye.
Councilmember Buscayino.
Mr. Buscayino, can you cast your vote, please?
Aye.
Thank you.
12 ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, let's move on to the next items.
Those would be items 6 and 7 as amended. Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino.
Aye.
Sadio. Councilmember Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Corretts.
Sadio, aye.
Corretts, aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Weston.
Weston, aye.
12 ayes, item 6 is adopted, and item 7 is adopted as amended.
Let's move on to the next items.
Those would be items 18 and 20, and those are amended items. Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Weston.
Weston, aye.
12 ayes, these items are adopted as amended.
Let's move on to the next items. These are closed session items. Mr. Krikorian, would you like to speak on items 22 through 26?
Thank you, Madam President, but no budget finance actually waived consideration of each of these matters so that they would be available to full council to consider, but we didn't take them up.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I believe the clerks will read out the settlement amounts.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Items number 22 in the case entitled Tyler Sheer et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al. There is a recommendation to expend up to $12,250,000 in settlement. Item number 23 in the case entitled Addison Faylor versus City of Los Angeles. There is a recommendation to expend up to $105,000 in settlement. Item 24 in the case entitled Linda Freitag et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al. There is a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement. Item 25 in the case entitled Shelley Hill versus City of Los Angeles et al. There is a recommendation to expend up to $225,000 in settlement. And finally, item 26 in the case entitled Felix Tesarian versus City of Los Angeles, Officer Carlton Cook. There is a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement.
And now- Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Aye.
Corretts? Krikorian?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Weston?
Weston, aye.
12 ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, members, we're going to prepare the room to go into closed session to discuss item 27. Sergeants, can you please prepare the room? Let folks in, members. Let's take a five-minute recess so we can prepare the room to go into closed session on item 27. Thank you.
Hi, I am Jaime Camille.
And I'm LA Mayor Eric Carson.
Yes, estamos aquí hoy para hablarles de algo muy importante, something that really matters.
Something that really counts. Ooh, good one.
The census is this year, and it matters more than ever before.
And it's not just about gathering data. They trate de mucho más.
Let's tally up all the reasons why the census is so important.
First, the census helps us get the federal funding that we deserve.
Lo que significa dinero para nuestras escuelas, viviendas, calles, y transporte, además de nuestro sistema de salud.
And the census helps make sure you're being properly represented in Congress.
Mm-hmm. Lo que significa el poder político que nos merecemos.
And that's just the start. So participate in the census this year. Make your voices heard, porque todos contamos.
Yeah, it only takes a few minutes to be counted.
And did we mention this is your only chance in a decade? I don't know about you, but 10 years of regret-
You're right. No se van a arrepentir por los próximos 10 años, qué vergüenza.
And this is the first year the census can be done online.
But you can still do it por teléfono o por correo.
Make sure to count everyone in your household, even if they're not in your family. So that includes roommates, babies, and infants, your abuelita,
your primo, your compadre, and your tío, and your other primo, as long as they live with you.
But no, not Panchito.
No.
Y recuerde, todas sus respuestas e informaciones son confidenciales. It's completely confidential.
No le preguntarán sobre su estatus migratorio, ni por su número de seguro social, ni su tarjeta de crédito.
And participating costs nothing, but not participating can cost everything.
So visit 2020census.gov.
Or call 311 for more information about how to participate in the census in Los Angeles.
Y hágase contar.
Porque in our city and in our democracy, everyone matters. Every one of us belongs, and everyone counts.
What a nice callback.
Yeah, very good.
Not sure who to contact in Los Angeles when you have to? Request bulky item pickup? Graffiti removal? Report animal-related services? Notify the city of illegal dumping? Pothole repair? Street sweeping? Find city resources? Pay your LADWP bill? And so on, and so on, and so on. Well, thanks to the updated MyLA311 app, you have the answer to all your questions in the palm of your hand. Just visit the App Store on iOS or the Google Play Store on Android and download the free MyLA311 app. How does it work? Well, let's take a bulky item, for example. It's way too big to fit in your car, right? Just open up the app, touch the "Create a Service Request" tab, and this takes you to the "Create Service Request" page. Under "Popular Service Requests," right on top of the list is "Burkey Items." Touch the tab and a new window opens up. If the item does not belong to you, touch the "No" button and fill out the required information. Check this out: You can hold and drag to move the pin, or enter the street address or intersection below. Moving the pin is handy when the location needed does not quite match up to the nearest address or intersection, such as along park trails, the LA River, or on vacant lots. Hit the "Done" button when you are ready to move forward. Our new MyLA311 system will now inform you of other open service requests at the same location to avoid taking duplicate requests. Next, touch "Details." You'll notice there's quite a selection of bulky items to choose from. Once the item and quantity are selected, you can help us by providing even further details by touching the select location of the item. You can even add more than one item to this service request. Once all the items are added, touch "Done." If you haven't registered for an account, we'll talk more about that in just a bit. You can enter your contact info or choose to submit anonymously. Next, you can add a photo by taking one using the app or by using an existing picture on your phone. It's especially helpful to city departments if you include comments about hard-to-find locations, such as "next to this address in the vacant lot under the palm tree." You'll notice a targeted service date has just been added. This is the date you will need to have your bulky items out on the curb by 5:00 AM, if not out already. Then, all you need to do is hit "Submit" and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific request. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an LADWP online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MyLA311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the "City Info" icon. You can either enter an address, or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for, and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our City Services Directory. Other options include "City Bill Pay" and even viewing city social media feeds using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon, and then select your choice from the menu. MyLA311, it puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov. Slowing the spread of COVID-19 means making sure that people who are sick don't infect others. If you are positive for COVID-19 or likely positive, please self-isolate to avoid infecting others, including people you live with.
Hi there, I'm here on 41st and Avalon at the Kedron Community Health Center. I've just taken my COVID-19 test, and I want to encourage you to do the same. Testing is free here at the Kedron Center. All you have to do is sign up and/or walk in. The test is easy and painless. This is a pandemic that we must win. Get your free COVID-19 test. It's free, it's painless, and it can save your life.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for LA history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as the last of the great train stations. It is also considered one of LA's architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, mission revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive historic Cultural Monument Designation from the city of Los Angeles in 1972 and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center. It is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to the Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
One of the most powerful tools we have to slow the spread of COVID-19 is physical distancing. When you're out of your house, please stay at least six feet away from all other people, and wear a cloth face covering.
The 2020 census is here, and no matter who you are or where you come from, if you live in the United States, you need to fill out the questionnaire and be counted. You have three ways to do it: online, over the phone, or by mail. For more information, visit census.lacity.org.
El censo 2020 está aquí, y todos necesitamos llenar el cuestionario para obtener la financiación y la representación que merecemos. Es fácil participar en el conteo. Hay tres formas de hacerlo: en línea, sobre el teléfono, o por correo. Para obtener más información sobre el censo, visite nuestro sitio web.
You may have noticed that at some intersections, the walk sign at the crosswalk starts a little earlier than the green light for people driving. This is called a leading pedestrian interval. It's a transportation term that means those of us using the sidewalk get a 3- to 7-second head start over cars. Giving pedestrians just a few seconds to fully enter the crosswalk makes it much more likely that drivers who are making turns will see them. This very simple timing change can have a big impact on street safety. Leading pedestrian intervals reduce crashes between people driving and people walking by as much as 60%. Moving LA forward.
We know that Uber Eats has expanded widely into the major markets since March, since the beginning of the pandemic. I would call that predatory.
We are committed to helping the working poor and the working-class communities of the city of Los Angeles. There is an absolute feeling of desperation out there. Many of our constituents are struggling. There are people who were living paycheck to paycheck before the pandemic and now are living day by day. They live in motels, they live in cramped apartments, they are now fighting for their economic survival.
This is good for landlords and good for renters. And their interests, which some people often say are not aligned, are aligned at this moment. It's a win-win. Renters have their rent paid off, landlords have their mortgage covered.
This council has enacted more comprehensive pandemic-related protections than any other city in the state.
Government has a responsibility to rise during moments like this, not shrink.
Today is an important day. Los Angeles, it is time to move forward, to reopen. Starting tomorrow, all retail establishments may reopen for in-person shopping. Houses of worship are also permitted under the new rules to reopen. Let me be clear: The next step does not yet include personal services such as hair salons, nail salons, and barber shops. And I know how badly many folks need to get back into those spaces. And we're not reopening restaurants for dine-in service at this time. Go to our coronavirus.lacity.org/business website, and if you're a business that is a retail business, download this helpful packet that gives you all the guidance, the things that you'll need. And the sooner that stores can safely welcome customers inside to shop, the more we'll see our stratospheric unemployment, that some estimate is higher than during the Great Depression here in Los Angeles, that we can finally see that begin to come down.
Look, I know we'd rather be here in a different context. We'd rather be here rooting on the boys in blue, but we'll get back to that soon enough. Every day, we're a step closer. And today, we want to celebrate those heroes that have made Los Angeles one of the best cities in America when it comes to testing. This site here today that we are announcing opening at Dodger Stadium is the largest site in the United States. This site here today that we are announcing opening at Dodger Stadium is the largest site in the United States of America with the capacity to test every single day 6,000 people right here in one site. Today, we have more than 10 testing sites across the city, 36 across the county, and we test on average 15,000 people a day. All told, in just over two months at our centers, we have now given tests to over 450,000 people. It's pretty remarkable, but we are not slowing up. And today's opening of this site in Dodger Stadium is proof of that.
So with that welcome here, everyone, please take advantage, get yourself tested. As the mayor said, this is how we come back.
I'm very proud to also extend our relaxed parking rules. During this emergency period, the Department of Transportation is not enforcing street sweeping in residential areas. Though if you can move your car, we are still trying to do that street sweeping, so help us out. Rush hour parking restrictions, non-meter time limits in commercial zones. We're not ticketing and towing abandoned and oversized vehicles, vehicles with expired registration or with recently expired permit parking placards. If you want more information about what's being enforced and not, visit ladot.lacity.org.
We're just trying to make change. We're just trying to make that right. Just, we're trying to get our voices heard. Just show our solidarity and show that, like, no, we don't want to be oppressed anymore.
Just come out as much as you can and support the young people because they can't do it all. They're doing a lot. But everybody needs to be in the streets to send a message to our leaders.
We're here to support Black Lives Matter and minorities who are struggling in this country. Fight now or lose the battle forever.
To everybody on the streets right now saying, "When, how, what?" The "when" is now, the "how" is together, and the "what" is racial equality. This moment isn't just a moment. It is a movement to change. A movement to change who we are in America when it comes to Black America and our criminal justice system. We need to make a firm commitment to change, not just with words, but with actions. So today, our city council identified $250 million in cuts so we could invest in jobs, in health, in education, and that those dollars need to be focused on our Black community here in Los Angeles. And will this involve cuts? Yes, of course, to every department, including the police department. It's just a start. We can't walk to the promised land in a single day nor a single week, but we better get ready. Good evening, Los Angeles. For the past two and a half months, I've tried to come before my fellow Angelinos, each night or every couple nights, to talk about the work of our government that you have comprised and elected, the taxpayers that you give and demand the services that should be here, to respond to crisis and to keep government working, not just in an impartial way, but because of the values that we hold, that every life is sacred, that we want to protect those lives and we want them to grow, that lives and livelihoods are important. And each night, I've tried to come before you and tell you about that work being done by brave community members and first responders, by healthcare workers, by everyday people who are from their hearts giving of themselves. At first, we just met one threat. It was the coronavirus. We couldn't see it, but we knew about it. And we saw its devastation before it came here to Los Angeles. Second, we saw economic devastation that was unlike anything we had ever experienced in our lives. The hopelessness and the helplessness that came, and the work necessary to try to mitigate that as we asked Washington to respond to help all of us in the midst of these tough, tough economic days. And then third, an old enemy revisited us, but it actually had never gone away. The scourge of racism that has been part of the American story. In our best and worst times, we have nevertheless always had racism that has made this country not equal for all, but too unequal for many. And the death of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor, who should have been celebrating her 27th birthday tonight, and so many others, we realized that this was not just a one-crisis crisis or a two-crisis crisis. This is a moment where we see how these intersect with each other, how the inequality in our society affects each one of us when we have an economic and a health threat, or when we see the pernicious threat of what discrimination and racism does to all of us, especially African-Americans. This week, we have held a lot of pain. We've seen a lot of protests, and we've ushered in a lot of peace. And maybe, just maybe, we've seen the beginning of some progress. I know how raw and fragile this moment is for most of us. I know how much we look for the enemy amongst us instead of doing the work to find the enemy within. I know that one step forward can't make up for centuries of progress backwards. And yet, I know too in my heart in LA who we are, what we believe in, what we see reflected on our streets, and who we can be. And it is my role as your mayor to help, not just console, but to guide, to take brave steps where, yes, there's always going to be criticism of too much or not enough, but to move forward through this door that has opened for us, to create a more just city and a country for all of us. But we're still mostly, if we're honest, in a lot of pain. Pain held first and foremost by Black Americans who haven't just seen and felt the traumatic death of George Floyd, but who carry the burden of centuries of racism in our country unevenly on their shoulders. A commissioner of mine, who is African-American, told me how he was jogging during the COVID-19 crisis and tripped and fell. In the streets, he would happen to be in Beverly Hills, a Black man bleeding. Nobody would help him because they saw first a threat rather than a human being who needed help. But we all feel pain right now, those Americans who have joined as allies in this fight to once and for all stand up and eradicate racism, not just in our hearts, but in our structures and our actions. Pain held by our police officers, peace officers, and National Guardsmen and women on the line who have protected people and neighborhoods, who are exhausted and traumatized too by what they saw in that video with George Floyd and even some of the words that have come at them this week. The National Guard began to use fewer personnel today. And barring any surge in unlawful activity, guard troops stationed in the city of Los Angeles will begin to go home to their families and communities, some right here in our city in the coming days. Although the county and the sheriff, neighboring cities may request their presence, and you may see them here in the Southland. To them, I thank them for being here, for being Americans who answered the call. And many of them have been working with us with COVID-19 at our food distribution centers and other places, called up after earthquake and fire. We thank you for your service. It is so tough for us to hold the pain that we feel no matter who we are, whether we're in a protest, whether it's just our experience as African-Americans, whether it's allies who see this for the first time. Those folks who are containing this pain know that we are all hurting. But I'm here tonight with the burden and the responsibility, the hope and the opportunities as your mayor, and together with leaders across the country who I've been talking with each hour and each day, to see what we can do as local leaders if there's not the national leadership, to say, "This isn't just about our feelings. This is about our actions and the coalition that we can build together of finding common ground." And I want to talk to you about that tonight. I said it once, but I want to say it again. We must not find the enemies amongst us. We have to find the enemies within us, to collectively own this moment and each one of our responsibilities, not just to point the finger to who's worse, but to that disease that affects each one of us, the way that we are all silent spreaders, and the way that our policies and priorities, the way that we have spent our money or put our programs has an effect on the lives of our neighbors and fellow Americans. We must act on the promise to eradicate racism in our hearts and in our policies, in how we spend money and don't spend money. Confront what has happened in America on all of our watches, not just at this moment, and determine what we can collectively do to erase that and bring about a moment that is safe for all of us, no matter our color, our neighborhood, or our title. We must recognize the work that each one of us has to do in the days ahead, and it won't be easy. It will bring pain with it, but it is a better pain to have than to say, "Let's keep the status quo." The burden that we must each bear in order to breathe hope back into a moment that I know feels for too many hopeless and helpless. That better tomorrow, that work begins today, as it does with each day of the rising sun, to come forward and to call ourselves to account and to see what we can do to ensure that Black Americans and others from communities of color are met with opportunities, not obstacles, without stretched hands and not knees to their neck. We need to end structural racism in America, and we must overcome, and I know that we can do this, but only together. And I want to once again state that harsh police tactics, like we've seen on several videos this week, have no place in the City of Angels. And where officers are deployed, they must keep the peace without violence. All city employees, myself, police officers, civilians, have to be held accountable. That is part of our jobs. And our civilian police commission's inspector general is reviewing the footage and will ensure a full investigation of the incidents depicting excessive uses of force, which can lead to officer removal or dismissal or discipline. And I want to also say every incident always has a larger context. But we have to keep the peace without violence whenever we can. Now, I know that there are those of you, we kind of almost listen through different ears right now, there are those who whenever you hear me say how heroic police officers are and that the work that they do with their lives on the line can be, who don't believe it and hear an excuse for bad behavior. But I won't ever stop lifting up the stories, the heroic stories of our police officers on our streets. I've seen them every single day as your mayor and long before that, of people trapped in violence who are saved by guardian angels, of young people who are mentored, who teach something to a police officer, but in return, get lessons back. Folks who are caught in sex trafficking liberated by the men and women of this department. And when we call 911 in the most dangerous of situations, it is they that we call on, and it is they who answer. I refuse not to give those stories a voice. Now, on the other side, others, some even on our police force, might think that whenever we say we're going to invest resources to heal injustices, that we have to confront racism or hold people accountable for their behaviors, only hear that as an attack on our police department or on police officers. But it's not. And I won't stop moving forward for our city in investing in the places and the spaces that can create peace. For you, for us, for our entire city. We have to all ask ourselves, if everything we do is so right and the status quo is working, why are so many things still wrong in our society? If this is only perceived as a reaction political pressure, why have we taken these brave steps before collectively? Without conflict, they haven't been easy, but in coalitions that sometimes are the pace setters for this nation and even this world, raising the minimum wage, making community college free so that 46% more kids can go to college in just the first two years from LAUSD to our community colleges, fighting off a pandemic together. But we as a society are blind if we cannot see the disparities, and we are deaf if we do not hear what protesters on the streets are saying. And luckily, here in LA, those who would willfully ignore their community campaigns and the past traumas, the hard conversations that have led to real change in our city and in our country, who want to paint a misleading picture that somehow we are waking up to the problem of inequity and racism in our city and our country, we can prove wrong. But that doesn't mean that we have done close to enough. That's also my message tonight and over the last few days. That's what I believe as your mayor, but it's what I believe as your neighbor, what I believe as a fellow Angelino and American. That's what I know that every police officer who bears the burden of our collective failures feels in her or his heart too. Our failures to deal with mental health and addiction, our failure to invest in our schools even when we've had opportunities, our failure to house our people and to make citizens of our residents instead of pushing them into the shadows. The officers have to confront that every single day, and that should not be your burden. It shouldn't be your responsibility to bear alone. It's stressful and it's traumatic. So when we say we are going to share resources, it's so that that family that you visited, to help investigate a crime and solve something and give them solace, can also produce a household full of graduates and executives instead of dropouts and prisoners. It's so that we can roll out mental health professionals and social workers to help get somebody off the street instead of asking you with a badge to do it on your own. This is to make all of us, our families, the families of police officers, all of us prouder to call this a City of Angels. And this is not anti-anyone. This is pro-our-city. It is pro-justice. It is pro-our-future. It is pro-public safety if we can get it right. That's what's on the line, my friends. And I know for some, it's not enough. For others, it will never be enough. And for others, it's way too much. But it's bold and it's brave and it's a start, and it pushes others to start up as well, to accelerate work that is not brand-new. Somebody said it so well to me the other day, "There are a lot more people woke, but now it's time to get out of bed." To take the actions of not just awareness, but to change, and not just through government, but in our workplaces, in our hearts, in our schools and other places where we call home. Those are the places we can eradicate this racism. These are the places we can fight for justice. This is where we can build peace and security for everyone. And I want those of you taking to the streets and protesting to know that we are listening and we are responding. If that's political pressure, then I'm sorry, that's also a democracy. I believe that all of us have a voice, no matter who we are, and that when those voices come together as loudly as we've seen, this is a moment for all of us to meet. We can't caricature who those people are. There are too many people on the streets for you to close your eyes and say, "Oh, it's just them." It is a reflection of the society, and as I said last week, it is the common ground we all unfortunately found through a death. When George Floyd died, from police unions to police chiefs to police officers to everyday Angelinos, we had common ground where we condemned what we saw and called it out, but it demands we take another step forward. It isn't enough just to speak out. We have to do difficult things in the days ahead. Together, we've worked to expand opportunity in this city. I talked about free college and making minimum wage go up and expanding our fight against homelessness, which by the way is the largest growth in our budget because it should be. And we need even more help because if you look at the streets which disproportionately is African-Americans, we see that still, without a right to housing, too many people suffer on our streets. We've hired a historically diverse police force that reflects our community, but we need to make sure it still does. And I need young African-American women and men who are watching me right now to join our department, to be part of that. I need people growing up in Los Angeles, whatever color you are, who know your neighborhoods, to join our force as well, like so many incredible officers we have, who know the people and know the blocks and know the personalities and know the peace that they will be able to promote. to promote. It's a noble thing to want to protect other human beings. It's also a noble thing to stand up for the lives of all people. Do you see that common ground? Maybe it's just me because I got attacked on all sides, but sometimes I don't just see the similar attacks, I see the similar feeling, the places where we all, when we close our eyes, want to be together. These United States of America won't hold in the months and years ahead if we don't find the united part of that together. That demands justice and it demands humanity, not the dehumanization of a police officer or a protester, or of somebody because of the color of their skin. And it, yes, requires tough conversations, and yes, tough decisions about budgets and other things, but let's get to the meat of that tonight so we can tell you more about the steps your city is taking to heal, to bring hope, and to bring health back. We announced a step earlier this week when I announced we'll be working to identify $250 million to be able to invest in jobs and community programs, healing for our Black community, other communities of color, for women and others who have been historically denied equitable opportunities. And yes, that comes from multiple places, including our biggest department, the police department. It's not an attack on any police officers. That is not an attack on the civilian employees who long before this are taking a ten percent pay cut because of furloughs and this moment of economic and health crisis due to COVID-19. This is shared, and I want my city family, our peace officers, and our civilians to know, I know you're all sacrificing, but doesn't the worst economic moment of our life, the greatest health threat of our lives, and this powerful moment of enough is enough about American racism demand that, of us all? It certainly does of me, and I will sacrifice, and I know all of us believe that those investments are ways to make sure each one of us is safer, whether you're in a squad car or walking on the sidewalk. And that's why we're working today too. I spent over an hour with Speaker Pelosi and talked with other leaders across the country to bring our voice to Washington, to help with national legislation to save lives and to also make investments. If we can pass the HEROES Act, which has gotten through the House, and now it's on its way to the Senate, and hopefully will be taken up soon, we can make these investments and not just make them zero-sum equations. They can be yes and. We can demand stronger cultures and better education and better tactics, and we can support peace officers and we can say, "Let's not give them the burden of today. Let's invest in stopping prisons before they have to be filled, stopping homelessness before we have to find shelter, stopping dropouts before they can get educated." This is the work that our national government needs to step up and do. How do we bring about and bring back in police departments consent decrees that, yes, can be painful like we experienced, but make our departments better? The state and federal government can step forward right now and join us with funds to expand our highly successful community safety partnership. This is a program in which police officers are put in communities, they volunteer for this assignment for five years, and they get to know everyone in that neighborhood, and the neighborhood gets to know them. They're not seen as occupiers, and they see the people who they serve with a depth that each one of them, that I've ever spoken to, said, "This is why I became a police officer. This is who I am." It's why I strongly support proposals that are put forward right now by the California Legislative Black Caucus to make changes that are long overdue, to restore voting rights to those who are serving parole, to improve emergency response services for historically neglected communities, and finally, at long last, to seek reparations for the impact of slavery on Black Americans, something your city council, when I served on it, passed almost a decade ago. And that's finally too, and Capri Maddox is here with me today, to talk a little bit about our city's first department of civil and human rights. This is a department that will have a civil and human rights commission where we can bring discrimination and find justice in this city instead of it going unanswered. It is a place where we can see what we are missing and study those disparities to correct them in business, in education, in our society, because if you're not measuring it, you can't manage the problem. If you don't see it, you don't see it. This department will be charged with enforcing the LA Civil and Human Rights Ordinance, which we passed in this past year before this moment, because we believe in this. And it will include an office of racial equity to conduct research, outreach, and policy development, and help us apply an equity lens to how the city spends public dollars, how our programs impact communities of color, and everything we do moving forward. And before Capri comes forward, I'm so grateful to Council President Nury Martinez, Council Members Sidio, Wesson, Harris, Dawson, and O'Farrell, as well as partners like Community Coalition, an extraordinary organization that has tirelessly worked since 1992 to bring justice to our communities, and the coalition that they have brought together for the critical work here. This will launch months ahead of schedule on July 1st, and tell us a little bit about this right now. I'd like to turn it over to Capri Maddox, and then I'm going to come back and also give an update on what else we're doing with COVID-19, some important updates. Capri.
Thank you, Mayor. I stand before you first of all as a wife, married to an African-American man, and the mother of an African-American teen male. And I stand before you feeling the pain that so many of our community members have felt over the years, decades, and centuries. I appreciate the title, but I had to explain who I am first. It was traumatic to see George Floyd begging for his life with a knee on his neck. He was calling for his mother as he slipped away to the other side. And that's trauma that we feel. I know all of America felt that, but as an African-American, we felt it in a significant way, because it's something we've seen over and over and over again. So the fear and the outrage that our communities are feeling now, the African-American community has felt all the time. And we have to have the talk with our children. We have to be aware of making sure that we don't seem threatening in stores where we may carry a big purse. I carry a big mom purse, but you know, when you go in certain stores, that can be a problem because they may assume that you're a shoplifter. So there are a lot of things that we know, and we do know one thing, unfortunately still, your skin color speaks before you do in America, and this is something that we need to get beyond. When we're birdwatching or jogging or even sleeping in our home like Breonna Taylor, we need to know that we are safe and secure. In this moment that we're feeling these feelings, it's important to know that America, over the last few years, particularly since a lot of these things are documented on videotape, we have seen the Black Americans' inconvenience truth. And just like the movie about the environment that was done over fourteen years ago, it was a warning that said, "In America and all over the world, if we do not deal with certain issues, we will have storms. We will have them in a variety of places. They will be more extreme, and they will happen more frequently." And that is why we wanted to step up and to see if we can make a difference, and to be sure that we make a difference in this space, because this is trauma that we need to get beyond as Americans, especially as Angelinos. I just have to say that when I started my career with the City of Los Angeles as a student worker in 1992 at the Housing Department, three weeks before the civil unrest of 1992, I would have never believed that in the City of Los Angeles, we would have to create a department involving civil and human rights in 2020. It's time for a change. It's time for a change in Los Angeles and everywhere. And we may not be able to rely on the federal government stepping up for that change, but we want to make sure that we can do it here. And through the leadership of Mayor Garcetti and the members of the city council, some of whom he's mentioned, we created the Civil and Human Rights Department, and they will root out injustice, bias, and leveling the playing field. I want to be very clear that we're going to be working with partners like the Black Workers Center, Community Build, the Community Coalition, and others to make a difference, particularly even UCLA Labor Center. I could not forget them because they actually took a significant leadership role in this space. So we'll be working with government leaders, employers, landlords, creditors, and others, because we see discrimination in many forms, where African-American women, as the mayor said many times, are more likely to die in childbirth, where African-Americans and Latinos are paying up to half a billion dollars extra per year for their mortgages than whites with the same credit score. In the face of discrimination at school, at work, and as a consumer or just anywhere you may be, this department will be here to help you. We will support our community-based organizations as they empower and mentor the underserved populations, particularly our youth of color. We will partner with researchers. So if you guys are researchers, we'll be calling you to find out ways to reduce systemic racism in America, particularly in our institutions. We just can't stand by. We cannot stand by and allow hate and discrimination to literally or figuratively kill our communities. This isn't easy work. I'm going to be honest, it's not easy work, but there's nothing more important, and I'll appreciate all the support of people calling me, telling me they want to serve, and we are here to serve with you. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Capri Maddox, for your leadership and the way you have been an angel in the City of Angels for a long time. This has been a moment we are called to, and thank you for stepping up to the call. The other night, while I was talking about what was happening on the streets and our ongoing fight against COVID-19, we had an earthquake literally during this press conference. But it was a reminder that we have not just one thing going on, but we have still midst of a pandemic that we are fighting against. And so let me update you tonight briefly on that. We can't forget that we're in the middle of this, no matter what we're doing, whether we're demonstrating on the streets, or remaining indoors, or heading back to work, or even going out to a restaurant for the first time in a long time. Please do your part to make sure that this moment doesn't bring with it a second wave or a tragic moment of us losing lives. I know this has hit a lot of families. My father's cousin, I just found out two days ago, died of COVID-19. We've had people in our office who have lost loved ones. This is real, and it's with us every single day, and it is almost too much to contain the pain of this moment for racial justice, and to know that there's still a killer out there that is taking lives from our loved ones called COVID-19. But we do have to be aware of that. Our actions do matter right now. We have to keep our physical distance. We have to wash our hands. We have to wear our facial coverings, and we have to do everything we can, if we're able to work from home or stay at home, to do just that. Today, Governor Newsom released new state guidance that would allow many types of businesses to reopen as early as June 12th. However, the County Department of Public Health will determine when it is safe to open those businesses here in Los Angeles. I know many of you have found it confusing. The state says what is possible, counties say what is allowable. And as we've seen, more Angelinos who are ordering restaurant delivery and takeout during this crisis, sorry, and so we'll be detailing what those are as soon as the county lets us know. At the same time, we know that folks have been getting more delivery, takeout during this crisis, and some of the delivery app companies have been charging excessive fees to restaurants and making it harder for them to survive just when we want to help them get up on their feet. So today, I signed a city council ordinance that will temporarily cap the fees charged by delivery app companies to no more than fifteen percent of the cost of the meal. And I hope that this will help pay for more cooks and waiters and other staff, more jobs, and help more restaurants to see that they can survive this moment that they've been struggling through. And I want to thank council members Mitch O'Farrell and Curran Price and Paul Krikorian for leading this work on the city council and helping our local economy. It's also important to note today that the county reported that key indicators are now slightly increasing. This includes the transmission rate. While we had successfully reduced our transmission rate over the past few weeks to one or maybe even less than one, it is now back on the rise. The County Department of Public Health anticipates that there are enough ventilators and regular hospital beds available to care for patients for the next four weeks, and recommends that if you are protesting, and UCLA actually put out some guidance today, that two to seven days after you've been out there, or two to seven days after you've stopped being out there, that it's a good time to get a test and to ensure, if necessary, that you need to isolate yourself if you've been exposed or quarantine if you've been exposed to someone. Today, the county reported 1,445 new cases, bringing the total to 61,045 cases. Each Friday, I compared to the week before. Last week, we had 51,000, this week, 61,000 cases. We've grown by 10,000 in just a week. In the city, we had 624 new cases today, bringing our total to 28,297 cases. A week ago, we had 24,261. And today, we learned of 36 new deaths countywide, bringing our total fallen to 2,565 fellow Angelinos. This week was more deadly than last week, with 281 deaths compared to 245 deaths the week before. We had seen deaths coming down each week. This is the first week it's gone back up. So I'll say it again, COVID is still here, and it is still deadly. So if you're out in a protest or planning to join a demonstration, please, wear your mask, maintain your distance, protect yourself, protect everyone around you and your family and your loved ones. A total of 25 city and county test sites were open with the capacity to test 22,000 people today. That includes all of our drive-through sites, walk-in centers, and mobile test teams for the elderly at our skilled nursing facilities. And thanks to our fire department and LAPD and Department of Transportation personnel who redeployed to testing sites, and volunteers who are returning to serve, and please, volunteers, come back. We definitely need you, and look at our city. This is a city that has found peace this week, and we need to promote that healing for everyone. And I'm grateful to everybody who's been working at a testing center, saving lives for us this week. Despite some temporary closures over the past several days, we've tested more than 50,000 people this week. That's good news, and you need to get a test. So please, go out there to coronavirus.lacity.org/testing and schedule your appointment today if you think you need a test. In these times of challenge and of trial, in times when our deepest wounds are ripped open, our pain is bubbling at the surface. Our hearts grieve, but our resolve is unbending. Many of us turn towards our faith traditions for guidance and for comfort, a little bit of direction and inspiration to cut through the chaos of this moment, to remind us, human beings, have absolutely been here before. And for me, in these moments, I also look to the Jewish Prayer for Peace, a text unique in its origins but universal in its message. "We have not come into being to hate or to destroy," the prayer reads. "We have come into being to praise, to labor, and to love." I praise these peaceful protests, and I'm proud to join their call for change. I will continue to labor, to reform our budget, to find ways to support all safety for all people in this city, to reimagine a city that doesn't just return to normal and that gets through some of the most abnormal times we've ever experienced. And I'll continue making those investments, reporting the hard truths, and helping us try to find the common ground to heal. I know that love and light can get us through these dark days, but so must our actions. And regardless of our personal beliefs, we can never see ourselves only through the lens of division. We must never be defined solely by the limits of politics or partisanship, or as I said, the enemy outside. We must look to the truths inside, the simple solutions that won't work, but the tough calls that can give us the hope for the future we deserve. And we have to keep our attention where it should be in stopping this pandemic and on honoring with action the memory of George Floyd and all the names of our fellow Americans, our fellow Americans. Because if we are to be one nation, we must make that a reality each and every day. The heroes that are inside each one of us, whether you're marching on the streets or wearing a badge, whether you're working in City Hall, or whether you're out there at home. home right now, watching and hoping for a better day, that is our common purpose and our common work. And we certainly need strength and love to complete it. So I wish that to you and your family tonight. And I'll take questions now. Thank you, Los Angeles. First question, please.
And first, we turn to the line of Claudia Pescuta with KNX News Radio. Please go ahead.
Hi, Eric. I have two questions. You said that the effort to move money out of LAPD and into communities of color is not an attack on officers, but I think the officers' unions obviously use your killers' comment as an attack on them. Do you regret that comment? And what do you think about the union saying that they have no confidence in your leadership? And then on the COVID side, the county's health services director says they're switching from oral to front-of-the-nose swabs because they get fewer false negatives. I'm wondering if the city is going to stick with just the oral swabs, and if so, why? Thank you.
On the second question, we go from the same lab, so if that is, they're talking about the testing centers, I'm sure that we're looking at that, too. I don't have a quick answer, but we've had good results, obviously, with the swabs, the way we've worked, and the county and city testing centers have both done that. So I don't know, I'll have to look into whether they meant at their own lab, or whether they're talking about all of their testing centers, but I'm sure we'll march together. Second, on the first question, no, nor will have any words that I say distorted, picked out with tweezers, and put out of context. It is so important what we say, but it's also so important to listen to what we say. When I talked about killers, I said our collective, our collective burden here in this society is that we let black men and women die. In this city, if you're born in Watts, you live 12 years less than if you live in Bel Air. Not because of anything that you did wrong, but because of where you're born and the color of your skin. So I said, "We have a choice," and I pointed at myself, "we collectively have a choice of whether we will be those who heal, or whether we will continue being the killers." That is what I said, and I absolutely did not say that about the league, about police officers, and I won't have those words distorted. Now, I will say this, and I did reach out to our police union, I invite everyone to the table, and it will require our collective leadership. It is so easy, as I said, to find the enemies without. And it's why I spent so much time tonight talking about the pain within, because I know our officers hold that. I want to say to folks who go up to an officer, and I get it, out of pain, who yell at them, or who call them all bastards, or pigs, that is wrong, and I will say that that is wrong. And I know I will get criticism the other direction. But I've seen too much of the heroism of our men and women, as I said in this press conference, to not tell those stories. But I also will hold anybody who is a public employee, working for taxpayers, accountable. And I don't have to choose between those two things. And I don't have to choose between just making this about policing, which is critically important, and investments in our community. If we don't see those two things connected, we are putting our officers at risk. We are putting our people of color in this city at risk. And we must do everything we can to build common ground and peace. And if folks want to divide that, or say other words, I'll keep inviting you back, I'll keep inviting you back, I'll keep making you an offer to lead in this crisis, and I think that there is a place at the table for anyone who wants to. Next question, please.
And next, we turn to the line of Robert Kovastik with NBC. Please go ahead.
Hey, Robert.
Mayor Garcetti, good afternoon. I'm actually, forgive the noise, standing here on the plaza of LAPD, and we're getting ready for a vigil here. I was wondering if you could speak directly to the men and women of the LAPD, some who have told us, in their words, not mine, that they feel as if you have been unfairly targeting their department.
I refuse to accept this. I can't say it more times. I've said every single night, while others were attacking police officers, that these are folks who intervene and save lives, when a victim of domestic violence is on the line, when somebody's entrapped in sexual trafficking, the folks who solve crimes, bring peace, mentor young people. Now, when there's misconduct by anybody, whether they're a police officer or not, in this city, there of course has to be accountability. And I can't not ever say those two things, because those are the demands of being a public servant. But I refuse to say that. I know police officers too much. I've been with families who have lost their loved ones. I was at the hospital after the traffic collision that we saw on the news, to be with our officers, to see that they were okay, and to pray with them, to be with them. I reject that. And leadership is difficult, no question about it. But leadership demands holding people accountable, and making sure that nobody ever erases the truth. You know, when I go to every graduation, I've been virtually, my wife or I, have been to almost every single graduation over seven years of new officers. The reason I go to them is because I want them to hear from me, and I want to look them in the eye and get to know them. Because they've done something that very few people will do. They volunteered to put their lives on the line to protect the people of this city. Now policing is difficult. Policing is traumatic. We collectively shouldn't put too much on their shoulders, and we should always demand accountability and improve our systems that they have to inherit, improve our training, find tactics, equipment that can save lives, do the eight things that I talked about, and that LA now has pledged and is implementing, that can save lives by 72%. The way that our officers have reduced officer-involved shootings by 45% in terms of fatal officer shootings in just the last four years, those are things that they did, and that need to be uplifted if we're going to get through this, while at the same time, we say, of course, all of us should start making investments in the places that result in less of that conflict on the street, less of that trauma for youth, and men in particular of color, and to find better places. If we want to shout at each other, we won't get through this moment. But I want to open up the spaces and the places for police officers and youth of color to have more interactions, peaceably, and to learn each other's stories. I want to turn more of those young residents of our city into aspiring to be and to become peace officers. And I want to make sure LA is always safeguarding lives, and where lives or force has been used unnecessarily, that there are consequences, because that can result, as we've seen, in people dying. But to my officers, thank you for what I know has been a tough week. Nobody has abandoned you. We have all sacrificed ourselves first, and we are making sure that this is a shared burden, not because it's your turn, but because I also believe in you, in your peace, and you getting home safely each night, too. Next question, please.
Next, we turn to the line of Patrick Healy with NBC4. Please go ahead.
Hey, Patrick.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Question, why do you feel it is so important, symbolically, to cut money from the police department, rather than if it's a matter of economics, finding the savings elsewhere? What is the statement you are trying to make, and where do you think those cuts might come from?
I guess I'm a little less interested in statements than in progress. I'm a little less interested in words than in actions. I'm more interested in investing in programs we know that work, that can help release the burden, and provide relief for officers that are called on to do too many things that is really social work for our society. And I guess I'm called on the investments that we know, and quite frankly, have just underfunded, even as we've expanded it, and we can all pat ourselves on the back. For instance, our gang reduction youth development program has grown by 50% since I've been mayor, even though the number of officers has stayed the same. I want to be clear, this is not about symbolism. It is about all of us saying, where are the priorities of the money, and what's the smartest way that we can put that in a place that prevents violence, that prevents division, that makes sure that racial inequities are dealt with. For others, it may be an important symbol, and I embrace that if that's important to them. But I want you to know my heart on this, that this is about making sure, just as we squeezed as much money, whenever I found a nickel or a dime over the last seven years, we've been putting it into the biggest crisis we face, homelessness, and it's still not enough. And I now come to believe, even as we do this and make progress, that the national government has to get involved in a big way for us to see homelessness eradicated from the streets, not just of Los Angeles, but Washington DC and other cities around the country. And so as we look at this, this is not about symbols, this is about substance. This is not about politics, this is about progress. And yes, those decisions are tough, but nobody in a big city, where we have a big department, we have to all figure out those tough decisions of how we can find those resources wherever they are. And trust me, those investments will be good for all of us, not just, first and foremost, the public, but for our police as well. Next question, please.
And we have no further questions in queue.
Okay. Thank you. I know it was a long one tonight. I wish you a weekend of peace. We'll continue to work for a city of progress. And with that, I'll give some remarks now in Spanish. Thank you, and have a good weekend. Buenas tardes, Los Angeles. Esta semana hemos tenido mucho, mucho dolor. Hemos visto tantas protestas y hemos recibido la paz. Y es posible que veamos el principio del progreso. Más que todo seguimos con dolor. El dolor que lleva la comunidad afroamericana quien han visto y sienten el trauma de la muerte de George Floyd y de Breonna Taylor, quien debería de haber celebrando sus 17 años hoy. Pero quienes también lleven la carga de siglos de racismo en nuestro país. Este dolor es difícil, pero continuamos a encontrar pasos adelante y juntos por la justicia y la salud de la comunidad y de nuestra economía. La Guardia Nacional hoy empezó a usar menos personal, y si seguimos sin actividad criminal, la Guardia de Los Angeles podrá empezar a regresar a casa en los días siguientes. Aunque el condado y el aguacil y ciudades alrededor quizás pidan se queden un rato más. Debemos reconocer el trabajo que todos tenemos que hacer y la carga que tenemos que llevar para traer la esperanza a un momento que muchos dicen quizás no tenga esperanza. Pero yo veo un futuro mejor. Y ese trabajo empieza hoy. Tenemos que asegurar que afroamericanos y otros de comunidades de color reciban oportunidades, no obstáculos. Y tenemos que acabar con el racismo estructural en este país. Yo sé que lo haremos juntos. Quiero repetir que las tácticas violentas que hemos visto de la policía en varios vídeos esta semana no tienen lugar en Los Angeles. Y sin importar a dónde desplegamos a la policía, tienen que mantener la paz sin violencia. Nuestro inspector general de la comisión de la policía está revisando los videos e investigando estos casos, las cuales podrían resultar en disciplina o expulsión de los oficiales. Quisiera agradecer a todos quienes están marchando en las calles de manera pacífica. Los escuchamos y estamos respondiendo para hacer esta ciudad más equitativa y justa. Estamos empezando ahora, y estas victorias son suyas y llegarán más. Hemos trabajado para ampliar oportunidades para todos, aumentados en el salario mínimo, y lanzamos el colegio comunitario gratis. Tenemos una fuerza policial diversa y los hemos entrenado en prugicios implícitos y en cómo desmunir la tensión para evitar el uso de violencia. Pero aún no es suficiente. Empezamos esta semana con recortes a todos departamentos, pero también departamento de policía, para invertir en empleos, comunidades, y curación. Por eso le estoy pidiendo a nuestro congreso que hagan los cambios que necesitamos y necesitamos ahora. Un estándar nacional para uso de fuerza, investigaciones independientes de brutalidad de la policía, decretos de consentimiento en departamentos con una historia de violencia y discriminación. Y necesitamos fondos estatales y federales para ampliar nuestra alianza comunitaria de seguridad, para mejorar las relaciones entre policía y las comunidades que sirven. Y por eso también apoyo la propuesta del grupo de congresistas afroamericanos en California para restaurar el derecho de votar para aquellos bajo libertad condicional y mejorar la respuesta de emergencia para comunidades históricamente olvidadas. Y finalmente, obtener reparaciones por el impacto de la esclavitud en afroamericanos. Por eso estamos lanzando un nuevo departamento en la ciudad de Los Angeles, el Departamento de Derechos Humanos y Civiles, y la comisión, los cuales tiene el deber de proteger a todos en la ciudad de discriminación, inmigrantes, afroamericanos, mujeres, y de aplicar la ordenanza municipal para derechos civiles y humanos. Y ese departamento tendrá una oficina de equidad racial para investigar, hacer alcance a distintas comunidades, desarrollar políticas y analizar cómo gastamos nuestro dinero y cómo nuestros programas afectan a las comunidades de color. Esta comisión empezará su trabajo el primero de julio, y me comprometo a tomar aún más pasos adelante. No podemos olvidar que estamos en medio de una pandemia. La amenaza de COVID-19 sigue en nuestra ciudad cada día. Hoy, el gobernador Newsom anunció nuevas pautas estatales para negocios que pueden abrir el 12 de junio. Sin embargo, el Departamento de Salud Pública de Los Angeles va a determinar cuándo es seguro abrir esos negocios aquí en Los Angeles. A la vez, hemos visto más Angelenos ordenando comida de restaurantes para entrega o para llevar durante esta crisis, y algunas compañías han estado cobrando tarifas demasiadas altas y haciéndolo más difícil para los restaurantes puedan sobrevivir. Entonces, hoy firmé una ordenanza que aplica una tapa temporaria en las tarifas que cobran estas compañías al 15% del costo del orden, y espero que esto ayudará a nuestros restaurantes y guardar empleos para cocineros, meseros, y más personal. Además, hoy el condado anunció nuevos indicadores que están subiendo un poco. Esto incluye nuestra tasa de infección. Si estuviste en una manifestación, o si tienes planes de ir a una, lleva una cobertura facial, por favor. Practica la sana distancia lo más posible, y hazte la prueba. Protege a ti mismo, a quienes están cerca de ti durante estos eventos, y protege a tu familia y seres queridos. El condado recomienda que se ponga en auto cuarentena durante 14 días, si ha estado en una manifestación, para protegerte a ti y a tu familia. Hoy, el condado anunció 1,445 nuevos casos, con un total de 61,045. En la ciudad tuvimos 642 nuevos casos, y un total de 28,297. Hoy supimos de 36 fallecidos, con un total de 2,565. Les recuerdo que este virus permanece aquí y sigue siendo mortal. Si estuviste en una manifestación, o si tienes planes, es importante tener una prueba. Visita la página coronavirus.lacity.org тестинг para programar una cita para usted o un miembro de su familia. Estos momentos de inmenso dolor son muy difíciles, pero tenemos que mantener nuestro enfoque en la justicia y nuestra salud. Yo tengo mucho confianza como su alcalde de esta ciudad. Nosotros tenemos la fuerza, el amor que necesitamos en la crisis económica, la crisis de salud, y esta crisis de la justicia racial. Seguimos marchando pacíficamente y luchando por la justicia, para corregir los daños del racismo, respondiendo al odio con la esperanza, y siempre liderando con esta fuerza y amor. Gracias, Los Ángeles. Adelante juntos. Buenas noches. Thank you.
The Baptist Ministers Conference held a march at L.A. City Hall, which included hundreds of clergy from the L.A. area to honor the life of George Floyd. The peace march began at the corner of First and San Pedro with participating organizations including National Action Network Los Angeles, Churches in Action, and local pastors and churches. Los Angeles County's court system is expanding proceedings to include technology options. A program called L.A. Court Connect will allow attorneys and self-represented litigants to appear remotely through audio or video appearances. The first available cases involving civil settlements and probate matters start during the week of June 22. The program will launch in phases during the summer for all limited civil, unlimited civil and complex, family law and traffic courtrooms. Goodwill Southern California will host Out of the COVID-19 Crisis, a pathway to shared prosperity. A webinar event to discuss the state of the job market and projections. The program will feature L.A. County Supervisor Hilda L. Solis and California Labor Secretary Julie Su. Register to participate. Visit goodwillsocal.org. Since the California Science Center has shuttered its doors during stay-at-home orders, they've started posting daily livestream activities for your family to explore. Each week, the museum will focus on a different theme designed to bolster your child's science knowledge. If your dream is to be an astronaut, there's a fun way to get a head start. NASA has a section on its website full of virtual tours of the International Space Station, Hubble Space Telescope Mission Operations Center, and other iconic NASA facilities. Explore these pages and more on the new Stuck at Home Science tab. Visit Californiasciencecenter.org. Every Thursday at 12:30 PM, the UCLA Mindful Awareness Podcast holds a free drop-in 30-minute guided meditation session at the Hammer Museum. You can download the app, stream, or download these podcasts. Each week has a different theme and usually includes introductory comments, guided meditation, silent practice time, and closing comments from notable guests. Currently, Zoom sessions are led by Diana Winston, Director of Mindfulness Education at MARC. For details, visit hammer.ucla.edu/programs/events. Heritage Square Museum will be open for self-guided walking tours. With a disposable printed guide in hand, view lovely historic buildings from the outside, stroll through beautiful grounds and take a look at lushest gardens in progress, check in with the museum cat Belle, and say hello to their many chickens. There will be a maximum time allowance of one hour for guests to visit to make certain all guests are able to visit. All proceeds benefit the good work they do for historic preservation. Schedule your self-guided tour of the Heritage Square Museum, June 5th through July 31st. For details, visit their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
Hi, I am Jaime Camille.
And I'm L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti.
Yes, estamos aquí hoy para hablarles de algo muy importante, something that really matters.
Something that really counts. Ooh, good one. The census is this year and it matters more than ever before. And it's not just about gathering data. They trata de mucho más. Let's tally up all the reasons why the census is so important. First, the census helps us get the federal funding that we deserve.
Lo que significa dinero para nuestras escuelas, viviendas, calles y transporte, además de nuestro sistema de salud.
And the census helps make sure you're being properly represented in Congress.
Lo que significa el poder político que nos merecemos.
And that's just the start. So participate in the census this year. Make your voices heard porque todos contamos. Yeah, it only takes a few minutes to be counted. And did we mention this is your only chance in a decade? I don't know about you, but 10 years of regret.
You're right. No se van a arrepentir por los próximos 10 años que vergüenza.
And this is the first year the census can be done online.
But you can still do it por teléfono o por correo.
Make sure to count everyone in your household, even if they're not in your family. So that includes roommates, babies and infants, your abuelita, your primo, your compadre, and your tío and your other primo as long as they live with you. But no, not Panchito.
Y recuerden, todas sus respuestas e información son confidenciales. It's completely confidential. No le preguntarán sobre su estatus migratorio, ni por su número de seguro social, ni su tarjeta de crédito.
And participating costs nothing, but not participating can cost everything. So visit 2020census.gov or call 311 for more information about how to participate in the census in Los Angeles.
Y hágase contar.
Okay, in our city and in our democracy, everyone matters. Everyone of us belongs and everyone counts.
What a nice callback.
Very good.
Not sure who to contact in Los Angeles when you have to? Request bulky item pickup? Graffiti removal? Report animal-related services? Notify the city of illegal dumping? Pothole repair? Street sweeping? Find city resources? Pay your LADWP bill? And so on, and so on, and so on. Well, thanks to the updated MyLA311 app, you have the answer to all your questions in the palm of your hand. Just visit the App Store on iOS or the Google Play Store on Android and download the free MyLA311 app. How does it work? Well, let's take a bulky item, for example. It's way too big to fit in your car, right? Just open up the app, touch the Create a Service Request tab, and this takes you to the Create Service Request page. Under Popular Service Request, right on top of the list is Bulky Items. Touch the tab and a new window opens up. If the item does not belong to you, touch the No button and fill out the required information. Check this out. You can hold and drag to move the pin or enter the street address or intersection below. Moving the pin is handy when the location needed does not quite match up to the nearest address or intersection such as along park trails, the L.A. River, or on vacant lots. Hit the Done button when you are ready to move forward. Our new MyLA311 system will now inform you of other open service requests at the same location to avoid taking duplicate requests. Next, touch Details. You'll notice there's quite a selection of bulky items to choose from. Once the item and quantity are selected, you can help us by providing even further details by touching the select location of the item. You can even add more than one item to this service request. Once all the items are added, touch Done. If you haven't registered for an account, we'll talk more about that in just a bit. You can enter your contact info or choose to submit anonymously. Next, you can add a photo by taking one using the app or by using an existing picture on your phone. It's especially helpful to city departments if you include comments about hard-to-find locations such as next to this address in the vacant lot under the palm tree. You'll notice a targeted service date has just been added. This is the date you will need to have your bulky items out on the curb by 5:00 a.m., if not out already. Then, all you need to do is hit Submit and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific request. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an LADWP online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MyLA311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the City Info icon. You can either enter an address or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our City Services Directory. Other options include City Bill Pay and even viewing city social media fees using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon and then select your choice from the menu. MyLA311, it puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
So, Madam President, there is nothing to report publicly coming out of closed session.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready? All right, we're back from closed session. Madam Clerk, what is before us now? Do we have any verbal motions that anyone wants to submit?
Yes, there have been several verbal motions submitted by members.
Okay, Mr. Bonin, let's go to you first.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two motions. Both of them are co-authored by Mr. Harris Dawson and I. The first states, "On May 29, 2020, large protests began across the city in response to the death of George Floyd at the hands of Minneapolis police officers. On May 30, the mayor declared a local state of emergency and imposed a citywide curfew in response to incidents of theft, vandalism, and arson that were reported during the protests. Since May 29, the LAPD has arrested over 2,700 people, with the vast majority of whom were arrested for misdemeanor curfew violations for failure to comply with orders to disperse. Only a handful of the total arrests were for violence or theft. Misdemeanor arrests for curfew violations or failure to disperse can be punished with up to $1,000 fine or not more than six months in county jail, though the city attorney has indicated that he will not be seeking criminal or financial penalties against peaceful protesters. Instead, the city attorney and the LAPD have indicated a desire to require cited individuals to undergo education on the reasons for dispersal orders or curfews during a state of emergency. This is an unnecessary burden to place on individuals who were arrested while exercising their rights in a waste of city resources. Instead, the city attorney should decline to pursue charges and dismiss all citations. I therefore move that the city council request the city attorney to decline to pursue any criminal or financial penalties against individuals arrested for non-violent actions such as curfew violations or failure to disperse during the recent civil unrest and dismiss all citations."
Second. Second.
Motion was seconded by Mr. Harris Dawson. That's what's indicated before he read the motion into the record. Is that correct, Mr. Bonin?
He's the co-presenter.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I thought you said he was going to second your verbal motion. Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. Ru. You want to go ahead and read your second verbal motion?
Yes, the second one related, "On May 29, 2020, massive protests began across the city in response to the death of George Floyd. On May 30, the mayor declared a state of emergency and imposed a citywide curfew in response to reported incidents. As the LAPD responded to these protests, officers impounded a number of vehicles owned by protesters. While these actions may have been required during the protests, impounding vehicles imposes a serious financial burden on individuals whose cars were taken while they were exercising their First Amendment rights. In addition, the COVID-19 pandemic has decimated the local economy and resulted in record unemployment, further straining the average Angelino's finances. The LAPD should work with the official police garages to release any vehicles that have been impounded during the protests without the vehicle owners being forced to pay the fees. I therefore move that the police department work with the city's official police garages to release all vehicles impounded during the recent civil unrest without requiring payments from vehicle owners, but instead, any costs incurred by the OPGs as a result of this action paid by the police department." Again, Mr. Harris Dawson.
I'll second it.
Mr. Ru, to second that. Any other verbal motions, Mr. Bonin?
No, thank you very much.
Mr. Buscano?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to offer this verbal motion, move that the city council authorize and instruct the chief legislative analyst to one hire consultant or consultants necessary to evaluate a proposed hotel development at 544 Pacific Avenue in San Pedro as further detailed in the text of this motion and make recommendations on economic development incentives that could help the project move forward, including but not limited to a potential site-specific revenue agreement consistent with city policies. Two, accept a payment of $150,000 for consultant services from the developer to analyze the economics and financing associated with the proposal, with the understanding that the developer will pay the full cost of any financial and economic analysis, consultants, and any other reviews associated with economic evaluation of this project. And three, cause these funds to be deposited into Council Fund Number 100-28, Account Number 3040 (Contractual Services).
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kurets will second that. Any other verbal motions? Okay, let's move on to Mr. Kurets.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The moving clause of this motion is, "I therefore move that Department of General Services, with the assistance of the city attorney, be directed to prepare and present any documents, including a draft ordinance, which may be necessary to grant the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority a subsurface easement on a city-owned parcel. APN 4319-003-900 for the construction of the Purple Line Extension."
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfield. Any others, Mr. Kurets? No, okay, thank you. Mr. Gakkorian?
Thank you, Madam President. I have one that I'm submitting on behalf of the author, council member Markwyze Harris Dawson. And the moving clause of his motion is, "I therefore move that the city council request the city attorney, with the assistance of the Department of Cannabis Regulation, to prepare and present an ordinance that clarifies and streamlines the Phase 3 Round 1 cannabis application process for cannabis business applicants and allows the issuance of conditional temporary approval to Phase 3 applicants for commercial cannabis activity, provided that, one, the applicant receives state authorization; two, the business premises location passes a pre-licensing inspection; three, there are no fire or life safety violations at the business premises; four, the applicant submits required attestations as determined by the department; five, the applicant indemnifies the city on a form provided by the department; and six, the social equity applicant meets the revised equity share definition."
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Buscano. Any others, Mr. Gakkorian?
No, that's it. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Ms. Rodriguez, do you have verbal motions? I know that the clerk has two of your written motions.
That's what I wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other members' verbal motions? If not, I'm going to turn it over to the clerk. We've got seven motions to be read into the record, so why don't you start with the first one?
Yes, Madam President. The first verbal motion is presented by Councilmember Rodriguez and Councilmember Sadio. It's a motion to establish a new emergency fund, the COVID-19 Street Vending Recovery Fund, and... and allocate to it $5 million from the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or CARES Act, funding for the purpose of helping vendors finance the equipment and permit required to comply with city and county vending rules and regulations. This motion is referred to the Ad-Hoc COVID Committee. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Second by Mr. Price.
Thank you.
Next motion?
The second motion is a motion by Councilmember Rodriguez, and it is regarding, and the moving clause is allocate $1 million of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, Economic Security Act, CARES Act, funding to create an economic recovery and job training pilot program centered around the repair and installation of sidewalks in the 7th District. Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Price.
Second by Mr. Price, and this motion is referred to the Ad-Hoc COVID Committee. And finally, this verbal motion is introduced by Councilmember Rue. It is referred to the Budget and Finance Committee, and the moving clause is for the city administrative officer, with the assistance from the chief legislative analyst, to report on costs incurred by the city of Los Angeles related to the Saddle Ridge Fire Local Emergency, Woolsey Fire State of Emergency, and the Latuna Fire State of Emergency, and to include costs incurred by the city related to the Northridge earthquake. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rodriguez. A verbal motion has been introduced by Councilmember Blumenfield. This is to be referred to the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee. It moves to instruct the Office of City Forest Management, with the assistance of the Urban Forestry Division of the Bureau of Street Services, to report with recommendations to develop a Landmark Trees Program. This has been seconded by Councilmember Wesson. A verbal resolution has been introduced by Councilmember Rue. This is to include in the state legislative program opposition to proposed budget cuts to multi-purpose senior services program. Is there a second for this?
Yeah.
Seconded by Mr. Blumenfield. A verbal motion has been introduced by Councilmember Rue to be referred to the Transportation Committee. This is to instruct the Department of Transportation to issue warnings and notifications during the week prior to the anticipated resumption of parking enforcement to alert and notify residents of a reversion to normal parking enforcement activity. This will be referred to Transportation Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bonin. A verbal motion has been introduced by Councilmember Blumenfield to be referred to the Transportation Committee, instructing the Department of Transportation to immediately convert push-button crosswalk signals along all city bike paths, including but not limited to the Orange Line Bike Path and Expo Line Bike Path to permanent automatic non-button pedestrian signals. A second for this?
Second.
The second is Councilmember Gakkorian. And that completes all the verbal motions that have been introduced today.
Okay, members, any others? Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before us now?
Madam President, for the record, those motions will be posted on the clerk's website shortly after the meeting for the public's viewing. The desk is clear.
Okay, members, are there any announcements? Any adjourned motions?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Mr. Buscano.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, colleagues, um, today, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Wesley Davis, one of Lhasa's finest team members and an active South L.A. community member. Wesley, or we called him Shorty, as his friends and colleagues adored him, had a contagious smile and positive attitude. If you met him once, you'd remember. He was all about bringing people together. Wesley joined Lhasa as a homeless engagement team member in April of last year, and his first day on the job was the morning after Nipsey Hussle's death, and the mood was very somber. But Wesley came in with a positive energy and lifted everyone's spirits that day. In addition to his work with Lhasa, Wesley was a successful business owner. Echo One Motorsports is detailing a motorcycle supply garage as a staple of the South L.A. community. He was a, also the captain of the Sea Riders Bike Club, whose passing is a devastating loss to the motorcycle community across South Los Angeles and beyond. He was always giving back to our city. He began working with Lhasa to help bring homeless people indoors. In the past year, he has made such a tremendous impact on everyone he worked with, everyone he helped off the streets, and all the city and county partners that work with his outreach team. To his clients, he embodied compassion, understanding, and forgiveness. To his partners, he is positivity, is positivity, is positivity... He was positive and charismatic always. It made him a pleasure to be with. This loss leaves us all heartbroken in the city family, in the Lhasa family, most of all, his chair's wife, Patty, his only daughter, Deja, and his stepson, Devon. He will sorely be missed. To our beloved brother, Shorty, but his legacy and his memory live on to the lives that he has saved. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Buscano. May he rest in peace. Members, are there any other announcements? Or adjourned motions? Saying none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.